Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education meeting for July 10th. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305 and 3-104, I move for the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County to meet in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance, evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction to consider matters that relate to negotiations, to discuss the budget strategy and perform an administrative function, and to consult with council regarding an appeal and to receive legal advice.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, to go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move into closed session, be back at 6:00 PM. Welcome to the Board of Education, July 10th, meeting. I'd like everyone to please rise for the pledge allegiance, and after that, we'll stand for a moment of silence for our troops and our first responders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from June, I don't have the date here, I'm sorry. Oh, June 5th and June 19th.
So moved.
Open and closed session.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mrs. Wright, call the rule.
Hello, Mr. President, if I may, I call your name, Captain Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morissette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four of your phone, and the minister approved, motion carries.
Okay, next item is the board involvement. I'll start with myself. I've been enjoying my summer, so we haven't had too many activities to do, and could pass it on, anyone else? We've earned this, so, Mr. Smith?
I met with Rob Marsh, Jack Wilson, our county commissioner, and Linda Friday, like two or three weeks ago, about some programs they're promoting at Chesapeake College for the businesses to get certificates, I think Dr. Kane's well aware of this, and I talked to them about some things, they're pretty interesting, some different things they're doing and like to proceed, and understand devils in the detail, how you get things done and stuff, but they're gonna have something in the middle or end of September at Chesapeake College, a workshop, and I was wondering if we could have them do a 15-minute presentation to us, maybe in August, we could ask them a couple of questions, because it's Queen Anne's County Chambers, and bring them and ask, they could do a little presentation, they updated me on some stuff which I found very interesting, and maybe they could get the whole board and the public would also see that for the people that are interested in it, would that be possible?
Sure. I think so, we met briefly with the commissioners yesterday on a monthly meeting that we have, and they brought this up, and I think it's September 25th.
Correct.
At Chesapeake College.
Chesapeake College, in the evening.
So that seems like a great thing, because the importance is for us to hear it, what it's about, and also the public to hear, because they're all invited, as I understand.
They're all invited, and it's gonna be all the counties with Chesapeake College, and they're kinda like the hub, which is excellent for us, because we're closer, just thinking of transportation issues and stuff, but they do some certifications that, you know, you need your college, you need your high school, you need your, certain people need college, but this gives them, when they get out, they've got another certificate of something they can actually, you know, have credential, I know we do some of it now, but this could take us to the next level.
Right, and so there's some work, so we are already working with Chesapeake College, and there's some work, and I've got my CNI family here today as well, thank you for being here, but there's some work that has to be done for the programs that we'd like to work with them on to get them certified, and it's not just Queen Anne's County, it's Maryland, so Talbot Kent, Queen Anne's doesn't have access for our students because it is not certified, so they can't earn their high school credit and that kinda thing for that program, but they know that, and we're working with them on that.
They told me Talbot did have some accreditation, and they've already done some of it.
But not for the programs that we don't have.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's the same boat, so there, we're talking about electrical, we're talking about plumbing, HVAC, those kinds of programs, it's just not ready for high school students at Chesapeake College, but we're working with them, and I think it would be good if we did go ahead and invite them to come forward, as long as they're ready, and we'll send out flyers to invite our community for the September 25th event, and I've already spoken with Mr. Tully, actually, today, to make sure that all of his colleagues get it, and we're getting the word out.
That's an excellent idea, we'll get it on the schedule.
So it would be the August meeting, our August regular school board, first Wednesday, okay.
I can make contact with Ms. Fobby? Did you meet with her?
Linda Friday.
Linda Friday?
Uh huh.
Okay.
She'd probably be the contact person.
So not Economic Development, you're talking about Chamber?
Yeah, she's with the Chamber, and I met, and it was a meeting, they invited me to, with Jack Wilson and Rob Marsh, which I think's marine.
Marine technology.
But, you know, there was more than just that, but it was interesting, and I think it's something we should look into, because I think our tech trades and some of those other things would be very helpful, and with Chesapeake College, if they're willing to do some of this, could be very interesting, I think there's some other stuff they've worked with in the past, but, you know, would help our.
We are wide open for it.
Okay, so you'll get in touch with Linda?
Certainly will, yep, so that we can invite her to the August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely plan on it for August, then.
Okay.
No, Linda Friday sits on the Governor Hogan's commission for CTE.
Yes, and there are lots of connections, I do understand that.
Awesome, no, it's great that it's happening.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Dr. Kane?
Absolutely, so same thing, it's been a time of reflection, and actually, we are gearing up, so we are on a countdown to the start of the school year, even though we just got finished with one, so we had a few retirements, we had Dave Brown's retirement, we had Mr. Dunn's retirement, we had Marshall Ryan's retirement, those were all great, we did the elementary Habitat for Environmental Education Habitat at Graysonville Elementary School, that was absolutely fabulous, lots of partners there in the environmental education world, all of the school, all of the students were involved with student-led activities for the rest of the students, it was absolutely wonderful, students from the Gracie Project did a lot of the teaching and the running of those programs, so it was great. We also had, through my superintendent's Environmental Education Collaborative, a green sale, so we sailed out on the HM Krenz skipjack out of Graysonville, Mr. Page joined me, as well as Mr. Tully and Mr. Paluski, Ms. Wright joined us as well, and we joined a lot of our environmental ed partners and Caroline County schools, they were there as well. We had Mr. Eric Johnson from Emergency Services to come over and meet with Mr. Pender and I, we talked about our plans for the Haunted Trap House, which is scheduled for October, in our middle schools, actually, it's going to be at Canard.
Heritage Building.
Right, Canard Elementary School, so we're doing some planning for that as well, that's coming up.
What is it called?
It's with the opioid awareness programs, and it's actually called the Haunted Trap House, and it used to be called something else, Haunted Crack House, but they have made some changes, and it's called the Haunted Trap House, so that's scheduled for October. And then, of course, here, at the end of June, we had a central office, sort of end-of-the-year cookout for all our employees, which was a great gathering, Mr. Pender and Mr. Pfister were on the grill, and everything was wonderful, and we're grateful for that, so, that's about it for now.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Paluski's not here. Citizen participation is next.
Do we have any, Jackie?
Anyone on the list?
I'm sorry?
Anyone on the list?
Do we have anybody on the list?
Anyone on the list?
There's no one?
Citizen participation?
No, there's nobody on the list, nobody signed up, do you think?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, we do? Okay. Thank you, Senator. This is for the Board of Education meeting's public comment, we ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines: Speakers should sign the roster, include their telephone number and address, comments should be limited to three minutes in length, questions or statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item or an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority, please do not discuss items related to negotiations, these items are to be discussed at the bargaining table, this is not the proper venue to address specific student or employee personnel matters, especially those matters on legal appeal to the board, comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processes of the available channels. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session, if you have specific questions, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your questions at a later date. The board respects your desire and evades the right to convey your message freely, but asks as a courtesy to this board and our citizens that you respect the board's request to refrain from naming citizens and name-calling when you offer your critique. First person here is Rebecca Perry.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
My name's Rebecca Perry, I'm a school psychologist in the county, and I just finished my fourth year, fourth year here in the county, this past year, I was at Queen Anne's County High School, Centerville Elementary, and Anchor Points Academy. I'm here to raise awareness for the range of services that school psychologists can provide, that you may or may not be familiar with, particularly as one of the agenda items is the threat assessment policy. We work with students, parents, and teachers, we address a range of concerns, talking about academic difficulties, social and emotional and behavioral problems, specifically, our role is driven by special education law, looking at conducting evaluations for special education eligibility, we also are involved for a number of reasons to determine strengths and weaknesses of students, and figuring out why students may be struggling. We consult on the policy, on the development of different policies, specifically that threat assessment policy, but we also work at an individual level with students to talk about crisis plans, to problem-solve a range of struggles that get in the way of academic success. One of the things that we are concerned about is here in Queen Anne's County Public Schools, we currently have the highest ratio of students to school psychologists in the state of Maryland when we're fully staffed, and when we're fully staffed, we have six school psychologists. Despite our limitations from that ratio, we've attempted to provide as many services as we could, and to the best of our abilities, and I'm proud to say that I think our group has done a very nice job. We are concerned about some interruptions in services being possible this fall, as we've had a recent resignation, and we've had some difficulty recruiting school psychologists in the past five years, and also, if you couldn't tell, I'll be out on maternity leave, so I'm worried about my group of colleagues, who I think is an amazing group of school psychologists. We really just wanna have a plan for how we're gonna best meet our students' needs come this fall and moving forward long-term, given the difficulties we feel we've had with recruiting and retention. We really just wanna partner for being able to communicate and problem-solve some possible solutions, so I'm just, came here tonight to start that dialogue. I appreciate your attention to the matter, and I'm open to any questions or any discussions you would like to have further, thank you.
Next is Julie Brucker.
Hi, I'm Julie Brucker, I'm a school psychologist here in Queen Anne's County as well, the schools I worked at this year are Centerville Mills School, Kent Island Elementary School, and Graysonville Elementary School. This is my first year in the county, and when we have been talking about things of retention of psychs, there were things that, when I had started this position, it was a 12-month contract, when I was speaking with HR directly, they said they were gonna work with me to go to the negotiations to try to open up the possibility of a 10-month position. Throughout the year, we checked in several times, you know, it was in the process, it was in the process, however, then we found out it was never brought to the table, so just overall, I would like you guys to consider discussing options with us as to how we can resolve this ongoing problem that we've had.
That's it? I did one question. Where did you come from? What system were you in before this?
I went to, I was in Virginia last year.
Okay, thank you.
Now, just on speed, you're telling me we don't have enough, and you're overworked, and then you're saying we wanna go from 10 to 12?
Mm-hmm.
12 to 10?
This is not a question-and-answer session.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, just appreciate it. Amanda Bramble?
Hi, my name is Amanda Bramble, and I am also one of the school psychologists here in the county, I work in several elementary schools, including Mattapeak Elementary, also in Graysonville Elementary, and Canard Elementary. I am also here in support of my fellow psychs, as well as our role in this county, so if you'll allow me, I will read from a statement that I prepared for you. So one of our priorities in attending tonight is to make sure that students, the students of Queen Anne's County Public Schools continue to be provided with the opportunities and services necessary to be successful, in not just school, but life. With several recent losses in our staff, we are preparing to begin the 2019-2020 school year with being significantly understaffed. Based upon our data that we've collected as a group, we have collectively completed approximately 400 evaluations for special education services and qualifications this year. While these assessment procedures only represent one of the roles that we fill in this county, they take an incredible amount of time and care, in terms of the number of meetings that we attend to work with both parents and school staff, as well as conduct the actual assessments with the students. Looking forward to the 2019-2020 school year, we anticipate starting the school year with just three and a half school psychologists, we have six that are normally allotted, which would imply that each psychologist would have approximately 114 evaluations to complete in order to help the county maintain state and federal compliance. What this would mean for our other roles would mean less opportunities to be involved in proactive screening measures, participating in school-based teams, being able to provide consultation to both teachers and parents, being less available to respond in a timely manner to crisis and threat assessment needs, which I know is on your agenda for later on today. Despite an already demanding caseload, we have worked very diligently with our school team to ensure that we have limited interruptions to these services in the past, however, with the looming realization that we are facing further demands, we ask for assistance in problem-solving, how to best continue meeting the needs of our students. We, as a group of school psychologists, invite the opportunity to open further dialogue with you on this matter, and I simply thank you for your time and for hearing us out on these concerns.
Thank you.
If there are any questions.
Okay. Does anyone else like to speak? Thank you all very much.
Okay, the next item on our list is the 2019 Educational Facilities Management Master Plan, Ms. Pollan.
Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Kane, my name is Carla Pollan, I'm the Facilities Planner for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. I'm here this evening to ask for your approval of the 2019 Educational Facilities Master Plan, that would be for use as a working document for the next school year, and if you recall, I was here during the last meeting to discuss what the requirements of this document are, and to give you a brief overview of the draft, and I'm here this evening to answer any questions that you might have.
I didn't have any.
Hey, what happened? It's a great piece of work.
Thank you.
I mean, I know that's a lot of work, and a lot of coordination with people, so.
Thank you, we definitely do put a lot of thought into what is upcoming for our system.
Okay, so we do need approval, and we will do that, I need a motion to approve the 2019 Educational Facilities Master Plan for submission to the Maryland State Department of Planning.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the 2019 Educational Facilities Master Plan. Mrs. Wright?
Hello, Mr. President, if I may, I call your name, Captain Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morissette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four of your phone, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna methodically go through several contract approval requests, first one, and I'd like the staff to give us a quick briefing on each one, first one is the Pearson High School English Core.
So as Ms. Passon comes forward, I just wanna make a quick statement, so, over the past few months, we've brought you lots and lots of contracts, any contract that's over $25,000, and you've seen contracts that have multiple-year agreements, and as we move forward, we're bringing these to you now, because we don't know if you saw them in the beginning of the contract years, and we're renewing, but as we move forward, we're gonna bring it to you in the beginning of the contract for the approval, and it'll have the total amount, but we won't bring it every year, you know, we'll bring it again when the contract is up, so as you know, most of the contracts we have, you can renew them or continue them annually, and so we won't continue to bring them annually, we'll bring it once it comes up for renewal.
But as we go through our budget, if it's a one that we committed for two or three years, and that will be stated in our budget?
It will be in the budget, mm-hmm.
But the commitment's been made, so it's already spent.
Correct, correct, and you, when you approve them, you approve for the total dollar amount, so you'll have already made the approval, but it takes a lot of time for you to do this every year, so I know I had a question earlier today about contracts that are not new contracts, but it is still within the contract period, we just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to lay your eyes on what we're doing, but as we continue to move forward, we won't come back year after year with the same contract, because you've already approved it.
I appreciate it, because we need to see them, and I think it gives everybody.
And we'd also like to be confident that what we have approved actually happens the year after year, the price doesn't go up, or something like, or be notified when that happens.
Well, when we sign the contract, it is for that amount of money, so they can't just up it on us in the middle of the contract.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Passon.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Dr. Kane, and members of the executive team, Captain Kelly, and members of the board, I'm Bridgette Passon, I'm the English Language Arts Supervisor for grades three through 12. The contract you have in front of you from Pearson is for our high school English Core classes, we had a three-year contract with Pearson, that has since moved into now a one-year, a year-to-year situation, because we are looking to, we look to renew our textbooks every five to six years, so as we start planning for a new pilot, should we start planning for a new pilot, instead of renewing a three-year contract with them, we're going year-to-year. The request you have in front of you is to refund our licenses for our students, so they have access to the textbook and activities on the online platform, to replenish consumables, because the textbook does happen to be a consumable, meaning that students can use it to write, annotate, mark the text, so they can have deeper conversations, and it lends to great writing assignments in it as well, and there is also funding in there for a novel that we are going to put into the English 10 honors curriculum, so there's a set for each high school there.
And are we set on Pearson? We didn't get this bitted out to anyone other than Pearson?
So, we have been with Pearson for three years, and again, we, when we did our, about two years ago, when we did our financial forecasting, we looked at renewing our textbooks on about a five-year cycle, so, as a side note, what kind of, I'm happy to report is that a lot of the counties, and in particular, a lot of the counties on the eastern shore, are going to the Pearson textbook for their core programs, we have a meeting next week with other eastern shore supervisors, and we're gonna present some of the curriculum we've written from the Pearson textbooks to them as well, and we're gonna work kind of collaboratively as an eastern shore consortium for the other counties who've purchased Pearson as well. My understanding, because it was purchased before, I was lucky enough to be invited to take this position, they did go through the vetting and piloting process, and got various bids, and then the English teachers voted on which one they wanted, and Pearson was selected.
What was the three-year contract, what was its value?
Pardon me?
The three-year, you said previously we had a three-year contract, what was its value?
Oh goodness, I believe we were in about the $160,000 to $200,000 for initial adoption, and the three-year replenishment.
So if it's $160,000, $54,000 is about the same cost?
Mm-hmm, annually.
Why do we go to one year?
Because we are, because we wanna stay current with literature that we use, and make sure that contemporary literature, as it evolves, gets woven into our curriculum, so in doing that, you wanna look at possibly replenishing your textbooks every five to six years. We don't have to, but it's what's recommended kind of overall, to make sure that we take a look at what else is on the market, to see if there's some new, you know, fresh literature that we need to bring into our curriculum.
And do you, go ahead, go ahead.
Are there other people that do this service, I mean, we're happy with these people, understand?
Yes.
But are there other people, when you bid, I mean, you weren't here, but when they bid it out, there's other people that can do this kinda?
Yes, sir, so our other vendors have been HMH, which is Hilton Mifflin-Harcourt, our elementary textbook is through McGraw, so we go through lots of vendors that are renowned, to make sure that we're bringing in the best choices, and then we use our stakeholders, our teachers, to help us make decisions.
Have a smell test, this is a good figure?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not down to the dollar, but it's in the range where it should be.
Yes, and we were very conservative with our requests, we didn't overdo it, I worked with chairs at both high schools to make sure that teachers and every student was getting exactly what they needed, we weren't hyper-patting these numbers or anything like that, and we went to the table about three times to make sure that we were using our enrollment projections to make these decisions, so these were very conservative requests.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That the next time this comes up, bring those other bids with you, because legally, by law, we have to look at those other bids as a part of the process.
So that would have been handled when they initially adopted, and this isn't the initial adoption, so this is a continuing of what we already had in place, so that's why she wouldn't have brought those.
Well, what I'm asking is, is it the best thing for us to use?
Yeah, because we're not adopting something new, we're continuing with the program that we already had, so when we begin to adopt a program, when it's new, so we have some books over here that we put out for public display, when we first look at a program, then we get all of those bids, and that's presented to the boards, because that, we put out for RP.
So we have a.
But for this one, that's not that.
But we have data that proves that the Pearson is the best thing to use?
Yes, and they actually have an ed report with a very high rating that indicates that the curriculum that they have built in with theirs is highly aligned, and we just take that, you know, align it with some, now MCAP, but prior with some park practice, pre-AP strategies, AP strategies infused a little bit, yes, it has a wonderful reputation.
Would we possibly be able to get into bidding with contracts with the other counties, if everybody jumps on board?
You know, that's something I need to learn more about, I've heard piggybacking or something, yes, I think one of our eastern shore counties may have piggybacked on another county on the western shore that was a little bigger to purchase theirs, I have to look more into that and get more guidance on that, but a lot of the eastern shore English supervisors are new, so we're kind of, you know, we're getting the band that was never together again, back together again, because the supervisors who preceded us did meet a monthly and were a consortium of themselves, so we're hoping to collectively make those fiscally responsible decisions as well.
So you're looking at a three-to-five-year window to have this program in, we're in our third year, and now we're extending to the fourth year?
Yes.
When we, and this is prior to you, I'm just talking to the board, when we bid it for the first three years, knowing we're probably doing a year or two extension, would it be prudent that you have some kinda fixed cost at that time, rather than now?
It would, I'm not sure what.
Right, I'm here.
Should we have forecasted what it would be?
We want to have this for five years, so we had, our first contract was for three years, knowing that we're gonna probably renew it one or two more years to it, if we did our three-year contract, and you're telling me it's somewhere between $116,000 and $200,000, could we then said, okay, we went up for our fourth year for $20,000, and our fifth year for 20, because we're already into the system, rather than having to rebid it out and pay $54,000? I don't know if they do that, I'm just asking, if you know you're gonna probably extend this contract, you have an option for the fourth and fifth year, if that's your projection to have it longer, so we'd have a, I mean.
Would it be lucrative for Pearson to give us another year now, and we would get a better rate for next year? I mean, is that, I mean, does anybody, do we have anybody that could be able to?
Well, we can look into that, that wasn't negotiated, I can tell you that, but we can certainly look into it.
But it's an idea, as far as, again, the buying power in it, we have the year.
But we won't need to buy those.
Not those books?
Again, right.
Right.
Because those consumables have been in use for three years.
Correct.
So we won't need to do this again next year.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
I'm just, you know.
I know what you're talking about, though.
It's like, again, you buy, you can make the deal, but once you make the deal, add-ons cost you.
Sure.
And if you could do it before, and tie me, because they wanna sell it to you.
Absolutely.
Once they got you, they don't need to throw that hook in the water anymore.
Absolutely.
So if we're doing this one year now, and thought of the future, maybe we make some kind of a bargain for next year?
But that's what we're saying, we won't need to purchase these workbooks again next year, they'll last for another three years.
They'll last three years, right. No, but isn't, there's more to this than just the books?
It's the novel.
It's the novel and the tech licenses.
Right, so the licenses will be, have to be renewed at a cost. Right, so the licenses will be, have to be renewed at a cost.
Oh, that's always the cost and that goes.
Yes, I think what's important is that we, we want to use enrollment numbers. And also too, as we work to increase the numbers in our AP classes, the numbers in our 12th and 11th grades will hopefully decrease. So I completely understand going for a two-year contract. But if we're being very conservative with our numbers and using our enrollment to make our buying decisions, I'm just curious, does it make more sense to go year-to-year?
Gotcha.
Um, now Pearson has been great to us and they have a lot of our, of our contracts. So I think, you know, maybe be more mindful about how we negotiate or.
Jumping on McGarman RPG.
My brothers from, or my brothers from my CNI family have some textbooks from Pearson's. If we all get together and say, you support our contents, what can you do for us?
Yeah.
Uh-uh, done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
And congrats, Ms. Supervisor.
Thank you.
So we need to approve the renewal, to renew licenses and purchase consumables from Pearson to deliver core English instruction in grades nine through 12 and to purchase the novel, All the Light We Cannot See, to be included in the English II honors curriculum. So I need a motion to.
Fiscal dollar amount and where it's coming from.
And the fiscal dollar amount is $54,997.63 to come out of the FY 2020 operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, Mrs. Wright.
For members, please respond once I call your name. Captain Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Harper.
Yes.
Ms. Morissette.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
I have four year firm with a motion carrying.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Passan. Uh, next one, uh, up for, um, contract approval is the Cambio Group.
So I'll do that one. Um, Cambio Group is a group that we use to provide professional development for our cultural proficiency training. They work with all of our A&amp;S, all of our administrators and supervisors. Uh, they are in our A&amp;S meetings at least twice a year. I think this past year we had them here three times. And they are also working in individual schools. So they do a lot of that work with, uh, cultural proficiency, bias training and all of that work. We're funding this, uh, $71,000 with Title II and Title IV funds. And we're requesting approval to continue that professional development.
So my question on this is, we're renewing the contract. Was it 71,000 last year and it's 71,000 this year?
I believe it was, I can double check. Uh, but it's somewhere in that range. It may be slightly less because our funding has decreased a bit, but I can double check that.
Do we have the travel expenses from last year? How much it cost us extra on that? I mean, because that's, that's an open-ended amount.
The, the travel expenses, um, were less than what was anticipated last year for the Cambio Group. We're very diligent in monitoring those expenses as they come through. I can get you an exact dollar amount.
But roughly, what was it?
If you give me a minute, I can probably look it up.
Okay.
I just don't want to.
No, no, no.
I just know it was less than what was budgeted on the, on the purchase order.
What is the travel, travel for what?
What's, what's on the purchase order this time?
It would be for this amount here.
Well, it says 71, but doesn't say what the expenses are.
Plus travel, that's just it, it's open-ended.
Yeah, but if you give me just one second, I'll, I'll look it up.
What else do we use federal, uh, Title II and Title IV grant funds for?
It's, it's professional development for the most part. Um, and also some ELL, um, training.
And we have that much money?
English language learner, sorry.
We have that much in a grant for this?
It's not a lot.
Yeah, we see that.
And I know we're restricted to only use like Title II money.
Those are restricted funds.
Correct, that was restricted just for professional, professional development, if I recall that.
Do we have anything else in our system that we would use that money for? It's just a question.
Those, those two funds?
That, that just, yeah.
That's specifically for this.
And it can't go to anything else?
Oh, no.
Okay.
These are restricted funds, travel funds.
And I don't want to hold this meeting up, but when it says 71,000 plus travel and expenses, if we have that number, either previous number from last year or what's in this year, I think would be appropriate to put a note on here. Just, and then if it goes over that or under, if it goes over, then they can either, at discretion to whoever's responsible, can make that decision if it's reasonable, but at least we'll know if we're in the ballpark when we, when we do our budgeting and also make some of these decisions.
Absolutely, and, and recall that this, even the travel and expenses is funded through these two funds. So none of this is.
It's still money.
I, I understand what you're saying. I just want, because you said budgeting, it's not operating budgets. That's what I just want to make that clarification.
We, we could use this money somewhere else for Title II.
That's what I just asked, and she said, no.
Oh, you can't try to do here?
It's, it's, for the most part, it's professional development.
But other professional development though, I mean.
Conferences, mhm.
I mean, I just don't like to spend money to start with.
Well, that's what this is for. So this keeps, this allows us not to dedicate general funds. So this allows us to get professional development that we wouldn't otherwise be able to get. So this is what that's for.
Yeah, that's the only reason why, I don't like it to be open-ended either. That's the only thing I was just asking, if you had a ballpark on it.
So just the information I was able to pull here, I have one travel for, um, one of the events was $1,500. So if you doubled that, we're looking $3,000 for travel for the two events, um, that I believe they participated in.
Okay.
So we could put, I mean, not to exceed 5% or something traveling. I mean, we don't have it in there, but I'm just thinking that would be. And then if it was, then we, you know, but 5% gives them 3,500. 71,000 dollars.
I don't know that they're even doing that.
Well, he said 15 twice.
Yeah, about three grand.
That's 3,000. So I'd do 5,000 times 71, it's 3,500. Gives you a little flexibility, just gives you some parameters where you have a, you know, you kind of know where it is. That's all mine. And if, if it's different, then it's, you know, if you have vital documentation, you got it. But it's not open-ended, like you said.
And again, these are federal grants, so we don't have any control over them and how much they go over. We don't have to worry about paying for it.
And they don't, and we, and we don't go over, we can't go over. Because it's a finite amount.
You grant it 71, you're going over 71 with, with expenses, so that's kind of.
But that would be included. I don't know exactly what the total amount for both of those are, Title II and Title IV. I don't have that data right in front of me. But it's not just 71,000 together. So it allows for that. This has to go through a couple of different processes. So the state monitors this. It's not that we're, we let them go fly first class and, and all of that. It's not that, it has to be monitored.
I'll apologize.
I get your point.
I apologize you now.
Because you have to ask the question.
I come into the private sector and I understand you're an educational side. It's a different world. And I just, I'll probably ask this question again before.
It's okay, you can ask the question. You have to ask the question.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more. So any other questions?
What year are we in using Cambio?
We used them last year, we're using them again this year. Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Paluski used them the year before I came. They did not, okay, so this is the second, this ends the second year, so we'll be going into the third year.
And has data collection started to rate their effectiveness?
Absolutely, and particularly at the, uh, school levels. So we identify certain schools. They worked with, uh, uh, four schools this year. And so they go out to the schools, they meet with the staff, they do professional development. They, uh, go to classes, visit classrooms with those four schools. And we'll continue those four schools, but we'll be able to add, I believe, two more schools this year. Uh, so as we don't go over the amount, we'll shut, we'll cut down one time with their visit for A&amp;S so that we can allow another school to join. Um, so it has been, it has been successful and we can certainly, um, give you some data on that.
That'd be great.
Yep, evaluations.
That's great.
Mhm.
And feedback from the staff?
Evaluations, yep, that's exactly what that is.
Oh, okay.
Evaluations for that professional development.
Okay, that's great.
Well, and if we do this every, you know, next year, I mean, it would be good to see the trend on, on the effectiveness of it. And if it doesn't work, then we don't do it again.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the renewal of the contract for about $71,000 and give or take 5% for travel and expenses with the Cambio Group. Um, the funds to be taken from federal Title II and Title IV grants.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, um, all in favor, Mrs. Wright.
For members, please respond once I call your name. Captain Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Harper.
Yes.
Ms. Morissette.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
I have four year firm with a motion carrying.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
So our next contract is Performance Matters and I believe Mr., oh, okay. I thought Mr. Watkins was coming forward. Are you, you're doing Performance Matters? Oh, come on forward, Ms., and this is Ms. Forbes, am I saying that correctly? Julie Forbes, our new testing and accountability supervisor. So welcome, Ms. Forbes.
Great.
Welcome, nice to see you in person.
Yes, uh, nice to meet you all, see you all. Uh, thank you so much and good evening. Um, so it's my pleasure to present the Performance Matters contract. We have been working with Performance Matters for approximately 12 years. Um, it is our, how we, um, you know, really look at student assessments, administer them across the school. Um, it's our data warehouse and really where we house a lot of those, um, like analytical tools that we're able to use to really help, um, improve student achievement and really get a close look at how our students are performing um, and, and how we can help, uh, help them achieve at even higher levels. And so this is the tool that we use to administer a lot of the local assessments. Those are the assessments that happen throughout the school year to monitor our students and their progress. We also, um, have the ability to bring in other data sources such as our state testing data, attendance data, demographics. And so, um, it's just an excellent tool to, um, that, that we use, uh, down to the teacher level to really evaluate how our students are performing and, and what we can do, um, to help them get to that next level. And the total contract, it's a one-year contract, um, that covers all of the student licenses. It's $68,178, um, sorry, $68,178.60 which works out roughly student license, um, about $8.83, uh, 83 cents per student.
The question I have, it says on the purpose, it says August 2018 to 2020.
Uh, that's an error, that should actually be, um, August 1st, 2019, my apologies.
It should be 19 rather than, it's a one-year, it's not a two-year.
It's a one-year contract, you're correct, yeah, thank you for catching that.
So Performance Matters is really your hub program for your other analytical?
Yeah, and there's a lot of great capabilities with it because it is now owned by Power School, which is our student information system. And so as the two companies continue to merge, the potential for having all of your data in the same place um, really is, is really allows you to do a lot of just powerful research to really evaluate our programs and our services for students, so.
And there's no other companies that offer those services?
There are, this is, um, a very robust tool, we've been using it for 12 years. There are other assessment platforms out there that do exist.
I was only wondering, because this much money, we should be bidding it out. Has, has anyone thought about that?
So that's a pretty major, we, we need to be, yeah. And, and you couldn't start just now.
Okay, gotcha.
Because we'd have to do training, we'd, it's a major thing. When you transition from one platform like that to another, you generally start with a pilot on a small number of schools so you can work out the kinks so that we're not testing and using that platform while we're just trying it out and being trained on it. So it's usually at least a year transition overlap. So you keep the one that you're currently using. And if you're looking at bringing on another one, you start transitioning schools with that one. So it's not something that you can flip like that.
Okay.
If we've been doing this for 12 years, and you won't know this probably right now, but I'd like to find out what was the initial contract 12 years ago? Because from what you just said, if I knew as a bidder, what you just told me, and I knew you, I, I've got you, you know, you're going to be renewing and it's hard to transition. If it's a reasonable increase, three or 4% a year, that's one thing. But, you know, you don't want to be gouged knowing that you, you can't move. And that would be my only thing, if we haven't bid it out.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure we have the records. I'm under the impression the contract increased 5% this year. Um, and you also have to calculate in the intangible costs. So because we've been using this system for so long, we really are able to do all of the how, uh, the training in-house. And so that saves us, because these contracts only cover the student licenses. But because we have, um, our staff so proficient in the system, we're able to do all of the training in-house, um, so that's, that's a benefit.
I understand the cost of transition would be astronomical too.
Yes.
But just make sure that, you know, this is at a reasonable inflation cost over the 12 years. That would, if we're not going to bid it out, at least we know we're, you know, staying on it.
I can look into that for you.
Thank you.
Is this platform, how about our new teachers? Our new staff, it, it's, they can get it, get on it, get, work it, it's?
Yep, we have training scheduled, um, it's already scheduled actually for our new teachers, yeah.
Okay.
Mhm.
And it's easy, accessible and?
Yes, um, I can, just due to my background, I've seen a number of student information systems and assessment systems. Um, and I've used quite a few and I can tell you that this one is very user-friendly and intuitive. Um, it's, it's a, it's a good, it's a good product.
So if we were to look at others, would that mean you'd also have to change? If you're changing your platform, you have to change your analytical programs that are using this as a hub?
Yes, I, I'm, there's, there's, there's pieces, um, that when you switch systems, so there's a lot of backend work that happens with the automation of the system. So you kind of have to calculate in those aspects. We, you still would have the data somewhere, but how, you know, you have your staff trained to access it. Um, it, it does really, you build the capacity of a district over time with systems like this. And we're in a really good spot because we have so many well-trained staff. So I think it probably, it could hinder the process of people being able to access data, just having to learn it. So that answers that.
And learn a new system.
Correct, yeah, mhm.
Well, in that vein, not to push too much on this, but would it be useful after 12 years now to, to actually just right now start, look out there and just see what's available and if there's something better and cheaper? Maybe decide in a year that maybe we will bite the bullet and do something new? Just a thought, um, because that's a long time to be with the same company. Not that they aren't great, I mean, I, you know, I've experienced Power School a lot, so.
But maybe over the next six months, look and see what else is available.
Right.
And see if, if, is there something more up to, not update, more fits our system better, And see if, is there something more up to, not update, more fits our system better, give us better information, or we're in the right, right direction? Because the dollar, dollar isn't everything because there's a lot of variable costs, but we need to be diligent.
And they do their diligence in upgrading their system. So it's not the same exact system that it was 12 years ago either. So they, they do meet needs. And, but we certainly are happy to look that up. We can do that.
And what's everybody else using?
Most of them use this.
Yeah, Power School is well-used, actually across the world.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a personal note, did, did you use it out in California?
Um, we didn't, but it's a California company. So, yeah, we had used, but most of them are. I think most of the student information systems and assessment systems are California-based, but a lot of my colleagues in the county that I worked in did use it, so at the other unified school districts. It's certainly, now that it's owned by Power School, they're one of the big ones. You're, you're in good hands with Power School because they are a global brand and they're very innovative. And just their long-term planning, they've been acquiring other products and systems. So again, in my experience, using a variety of different assessment systems over my career, this is, again, very user-friendly and intuitive, very easy to train on. And when you, I, I think, again, our goal is to get our users, our teachers, our principals, our staff, to really be able to quickly access the data. And, and the system does a really good job. And I'd be happy to, you know, show it to anyone if you'd ever like to see it and we could sit down. It's, it's a great system, so it's a good choice.
So the only thing that needs to be changed on here then, Mr. Fister, is the date?
Yes.
Well, on the purpose, it says 18, it should be 19. Under action, it does have 19 to 20, but on the purpose, just for the document, it should probably say 18.
Yes, you're right.
Okay.
We'll adjust that.
Thank you.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the renewal of the ongoing contract with Power School for the use of the Performance Matters Assessment Data Warehouse and Analytics with a renewal date of August 1st, 2019, and continuing through July 31st, 2020, for the cost of $68,178.60, and will be budgeted through our FY '20 operating budget.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, Mrs. Wright.
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have one year firmament, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next contract is for the Star 360 platform. Yours?
It's Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Watkins, the future principal of.
Current.
Congratulations.
Current principal.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Current.
Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Very happy for you.
Thank you. For, for the record, my name is Rob Watkins, current principal of Southern Road Middle School, formerly supervisor of mathematics. Today, I'm presenting to you a request for a contract to bring back Star 360 to our district. Star 360 is a universal screener platform and a resource to support our English learners in our district. We typically, we previously had had Star 360 during the 1617 and 1718 school year, and unfortunately, funding was cut last year that just allowed us to continue to contract into this year. The purpose of Universal Screen is to provide all students in K-8 an opportunity to show us what, what they know in order to catch any students who need extra supports during their educational year. This, in addition, Maryland recently passed Senate Bill 734, the Maryland Ready to Read Act. That act requires early, early assessment and screening for all of our students in pre-K to 2. This, this contract brings us into compliance with that law. Additionally, the funding for this contract is being made available through the Restricted Transitional Supplemental Instructional for Struggling Learners Grant provided through the Kerwin legislation.
So not out of our 2020 restricted operating budget?
This is, this is being funded at Kerwin dollars, yes.
That's exactly what that means.
Okay, that's what that means.
Because the Kerwin funds are restricted.
Okay.
This is what, the restricted Kerwin funds is funding this.
You threw Kerwin in there, that's why it doesn't say Kerwin on here. So can I ask a question? Is, could, are we bidding this out? Are there other companies that do this?
Yes, there are other companies that, that do this. We, two years ago, three years ago, when we initially brought in a universal screener, we reviewed all the available screens at that, at that time. This year, we did decide to bring back a, the screen that we had previously used in order to ensure a, a very clear implementation during the school year. When we initially purchased this product, we spent a great deal of time training our teachers, our, our school-based administrators, our central office staff on how to interpret the data results and how to leverage that data to improve instruction in our buildings. It was, it was deemed that the, the extra costs that would be associated with bringing in another platform to our district would significantly impact and raise the cost and potentially make it out of reach for us. Additionally, I have, we did price this program against other programs, not publicly, but we did price it against it, and it's, it's in alignment with other associated programs.
But the, the issue with this is since we're using Kerwin funds, there are criteria for use of these funds for struggling learners. And it is particularly for K through 3. But what we found was that we were able to use this company, and it really provides a sole source purchase for us because it will allow up to grade 8, I believe, right?
Yes.
Which covers K through 3, and they will allow it. Whereas we couldn't just go and buy a K through 3 and not get the most bang for the buck and allow other grade levels to use it. So following the Kerwin legislation, this was the vendor that would take care of both of those.
I understand why I'm having to ask these questions because if we don't, our feet are held to the fire.
Sure.
And if we don't have the bids for this, we get asked, why didn't you get bids for this? That's the only reason why, I'm sorry if it seems like I'm grilling everybody on this, but I have to ask these questions to keep everybody, you know, compliant.
Not at all.
And it's, I totally understand. You already have used this, you know how it works. Everybody here, you know, gets it. Learning curve is less, I understand. It's just a lot of money and we have to ask these questions. I apologize.
Sure. It is a, it is a quality product. It is, is a part of our data analysis system. It's a welcome piece back from all the building-based administrators. It does do K-8 reading and mathematics and does provide a support on our licenses for our English learners to support their English language acquisition.
So it also includes math, you're saying?
It does. It includes, this, this total cost includes a full universal screen to ensure no, no child is being left behind.
I see they gave us a discount too.
They did. We did negotiate with them to ensure that we could bring it back to our district.
Good idea.
I will, I will say, this, this contract happens to be over $10,000 less than the previous contract.
Because of the discount or because it got offered that way?
Yes.
They wanted, because they wanted us.
Because of this discount and because we wanted to combine all the services under one contract.
Okay. I'm fine.
Great. Any other questions?
Mr. Fister, good?
I'm fine.
So I need a motion to approve a contract for the Star 360 platform, contract period from August 1st to July 30th, August 1st, 2019 to July 31st, 2020. And the dollar amount is 84, $85,417.45 coming out of the FY '20 restricted operating budget.
So moved. Second.
Second.
A motion second, Mrs. Wright.
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four year firmament, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a minute.
Yes.
Next one up is the license and consumables for Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. Ms. Passan, again?
Good evening, again, I'm Bridget Passan, English Language Arts Supervisor for grades 3 through 12, yes, 3 through 12. The contract in front of you is for the renewal of our reading interventions for grades 3 through 8, which are currently being funded by the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant. The grant was a competitive grant, grant of which we applied for last year and were granted a million dollars over the course of three years. With a significant amount of that money, we looked at data from our Tier 2 reading interventions and found that, that the best decision to help, to help our students was to kind of overhaul our reading interventions, put reading specialists back in front of students as the experts running them with evidence-based and approved ESSA products. I'm really happy to report that 85% of our students improved their Lexile level. In layman's terms, that means that their accuracy, fluency, and comprehension improved over the course of last school year. The majority of them improving 100 Lexile points or more, which is significant. So this contract is for the renewal of those licenses of consume, and of consumables. And we have a few coaching days left over from last year. What's great about this product is that they have consultants and coaches who do real-time training for our reading specialists. So that training part of me is not included in this contract. It's just for the materials, the consumables and the licenses, and then the hosting fee for all of that, for all of those licenses.
What's a consume, which, what is a consumable?
This, what the students write in. So they have a book that goes along with the program.
Okay, there's a book that goes, okay.
Yes.
So the trainers is what you have left over from the last year?
Yes, the trainers, training is left over from last year. We have about three more days left, which is great.
And I have a question on the, the program itself.
Sure.
The HMH, though, is the contract of the company and the interventions we used last year. How many years have we used them?
We have used them in high school, in our high schools, for a very long time. In our elementary and middle schools, when we looked at this, we were using 26 different programs across those schools. So with, with it already being and working in our high schools, when we were doing our research to find out what was the best product on the market and what had the ESSA rating, because it's purchased with federal dollars, it needs a high ESSA rating. HMH checked all our boxes. A lot of my colleagues were looking at it for their counties as well and have since adopted it with Striving Readers Literacy Funds. So that was the, that was our method for selecting it.
So it repli, you dropped some of the, I was personally involved in some of the interventions.
Okay, yes.
And I always wondered if they worked or not, because I, you know, wasn't sure what was working or not. And I, I know we had, I had asked a couple of years ago if you all were looking at the evaluation of the intervention, get rid of ones that don't work. And so this particular one, it sounds like you were pretty successful last year with that, at the elementary level.
Yes, yes. Every school met their annual, they had a target of growth determined. Every school met it, with several of our schools going, going beyond. So it's been really exciting. I really want to publicly thank the reading specialists who took this on and ran with it and made it work. And they're excited for another year of it.
So of the other 26 different platforms that you were using, we have since weeded those down to what, few left?
So what, in some of the, what I, the research we had done in looking at how they were being used, we had found that there was a lot of funding that had been spent and the licenses weren't being used. So there were approximately eight of them that were tech-based, where we weren't really using the amount of licenses we have purchased. Admittedly, we have dropped those tech, the tech interventions and gone with this as our primary Tier 2 interventions because it's systematic, because it does reporting across the board, because it has that reporting piece where an HMH consultant, a vice president comes and presents to us twice a year on our data. The interventions that were book-based, hard copies are still there for students. We have a handful of students in each school. Where a System 44, Read 180 might not be the best fit for them. So we still have resources in the event that Read 180 or System 44 aren't appropriate interventions for, for our students.
So we have backups for?
We have backups.
To help our students, okay.
Yes, Ms. Harper.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Good.
So I need a motion to renew licenses and purchase the consumables from Houghton Mifflin Harcourt in grades 3 through 8. Contract period is August 2019 to June 2020, and the amount of $29,637.95. And it is budgeted for three years? Wait, year three, oh, we're on year three, I'm sorry. FY, I mean, 2019 to 2020, Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant.
So moved.
Signee second.
Second.
Okay. A motion second, Mrs. Wright.
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four year firmament, motion carries. Thank you.
Done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agile Mind.
Mr. Watkins is coming back.
Good evening again.
Hello.
Oh, here I present to you a request for a contract to extend Agile Mind into next year's school year. This is a one-year contract. Agile Mind is a program that we use that supports 12 of our secondary math courses, beginning with grade 6 mathematics, continuing on through Algebra II at the high school level. This is a coherent and strategically aligned program that is tightly aligned to the high school and middle school mathematics standards and allows continual updates of the program. This program has been in use in middle school since the 1415 school year, and next year will be our sixth year of usage. At the high school level next year will be the fifth year of usage. In addition to the, the program itself, the instructional resource, it also comes with a high-quality assessment bank that allows teachers to create formative and summative assessments that are tightly aligned to the standards and to the instructional program.
So what's our historical date on this, it's working?
Yes.
What, I mean?
Yes, so when you look at our state, our state achievement data, so for instance, for, for the past five years in Algebra 1, we've ranked in a top 5 in the state when compared to other districts, always number one on the eastern shore. That, that's the data that we'll, we'll cite there. The, the middle school and the, and the other high school data is also strong.
So this is just a renewal of a contract we've been doing for the last few years?
That's correct. At this point, it's been a one-to-one contract. To date, Agile Mind has not presented to us a significant savings by going to a multi-year deal, so we've, we've stuck with a one-to-one contract. We have not seen a significant increase since the initial implementation of this program. I, I want to say the, the initial implementation of this program in 1415 was just a few percent lower than it is today. They've held their own rate standard.
Are there any other counties using this we couldn't piggyback with and try to bargain better?
There are not a lot of Maryland districts that have been using Agile Mind. Worcester County uses it, Washington County has used it, and Baltimore County has used it. Currently, the closest related district is Calvert County.
So nobody's like trying to join forces to get better, better prices out of these guys?
I'm not certain.
Okay. Other questions?
I, I will say this, so, so when you, when you look at the, when you look at the cost of this program over the course of five years, it's still significantly less than the cost of a textbook. And the online platform allows for ready renewal and updates. We participate with the update process with Agile Mind. They consult with our teachers to ensure that we're getting the best high-quality program. They are a very responsive program, and we feel strongly that it has positioned our math program to be the best on the shore.
If we threw textbooks in this, it'd be 300, 400,000, easy.
Yep, so it serves 12 courses.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm questioning that at all, I get, I get it.
We had a lot more angst about it when it first came in.
Remember, we, we were on the board when it first came in. And look how well it's doing.
Yes. And the, the teachers are very comfortable using it, it's a, they really have done a good job embracing the instructional changes that we've asked in our math program. The program has leveraged us to really incorporate higher-level thinking into the program, and it really has eased the workload of our teachers to ensure that, that we're doing the right things with our kids and being as most efficient as we possibly can.
Mr. Fister, where does this come out of in the operating budget? Is this, what is this listed?
Materials of instruction, within, within curriculum and instruction.
Okay, thank you.
We do cross, like, not post, but talk to other counties, some contracts we send out so they?
And jump on it?
Yeah. Jump on it, but just know we're in the right if area, and I don't know who we have in our, if it's you or who we have in our system, they can sit there and say, you know, when you tell me other counties are doing it, which is at your expertise, you as a financial guy can sit there and say, yeah, they're all in the 99 range or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, so a lot of these contracts, and, and because of our resources, you know, being limited, we, we will either go out to bid or we will try to source it from a cooperatively purchased. But a lot of these type of instructional contracts also, because one county is, is offering, without going through that formal bid process, we're getting the same price as a Worcester or a Calvert, just without having to go through that bid process. Because some of these things do not have to be bid, and we just piggyback on those, you know, on those costs. So we do look at those kind of contracts with our meetings, the purchasing consortiums that we have, Brick Pack and a couple of other ones that we're members of. We do constantly look and work with the departments to see if there are other opportunities for savings.
But just, but I mean, I'm a humble, simple, important, if this is what you need, you've been doing it, and it works for us, that's great. As a financial guy, are we in the ballpark, making sure that, you know, our, our contracts are going in a, in an appropriate way, in an efficient way?
Yes.
Because, you know, you're an educator, you're the guy that's putting Washington dollars.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Is this one that it requires a bid or not?
It does not.
Okay.
I have a question generally about the content. As a parent, when we get to the higher maths, is there ability for the student to pull it up for, for the parent to understand and try to help them when they have questions? Because without a textbook, my question is always, where's your textbook so I can see it to refresh my memory?
That's correct. Each student has an individual account, so they, the parent would have access through the student's individual account. The, the program, so it, it's, think of it as an online textbook. It's not a traditional textbook in a traditional sense, if you think about what a textbook looks like. So it, it's a little higher end in terms of the, the resources that are attached to it, but it has the same sorts of resources to provide supports for, for students at home.
The breakdown and steps.
That's right. And often it exceeds those expectations. And Agile Mind has done a lot of adjusting over the years to ensure that those resources are easy to understand, easy to read, and easy to find in the platform.
Easy for the non-experienced parent on computers to?
I do believe so, yes. And we have a parent guide on our math website that really walks you through, walks a parent through how to navigate the Agile Mind platform. It's a, it's like a 10-page document that we put together a couple of years ago that really provides a good overview on how to use the platform.
Okay.
One of the things I remember from back when it first came in is you offered, at the schools, you offered a training class. Basically, it was advertised by the principals, and the parents, like I, came in to see what this is all about. And it's been a few years, so maybe we ought to think of something like that for your relief to set something like that up, because there are new ones coming in that are going to start using it.
It's generally part of the sixth-grade math night.
Math night, okay.
So after a couple of years of implementation, we, for instance, the current eighth-grade students do not necessarily need that resource because they've been using it for two years. So the sixth-grade, part of the sixth-grade implementation is generally, we pull them in and give them some understanding how to use it. It really is an easy program to navigate. You really do just click on the topic, and it takes you right into where you need to go. I would say it's easier than a textbook. You're not flipping pages. It's organized in a very easy fashion.
Unless you're a parent.
It really helped me. It really did help me back then, too.
I am happy to present to you guys and give you any information you'd like to have about the program.
I can't do sixth-grade math.
This is a little off the subject, but do all, most of our students have access to the internet to get to this when they're home? Or is that a, I mean, just from your, and maybe you don't, but is that an issue sometimes?
Yeah, it is certainly an issue in my neck of the woods. So not, so the entire program is available offline too. So most of the homework is created.
You can download it.
That is correct. It is downloaded and provides them in paper format in order for them to go home and complete. Some, there are some assignments that are created online, but every assignment that's created online can be created as a PDF. So anybody who needs access to it. And let's be clear, that mathematics also isn't always done online. So very often, the teacher decides to pull the PDF together and have them do it hands-on with the manipulatives, and so they can solve the problems in a way they see fit.
So if a child has a laptop, they can download it, actually take that with them and enough storage or whatever, hopefully the...
Typically, the teacher downloads it as part of the class assignment and distributes it on paper.
On paper, okay.
Typically, it's not typical for students to use the PDF version of it on their Chromebooks. Their Chromebooks don't really have the space in order to store that kind of stuff. It's really an online tool.
But they, but somebody does not have access to Interstate at home. They do understand, some people don't in the northern area.
That's correct. I'll make sure, I'll make sure in my new role that we're doing the right thing up there.
My daughter's good here, and I need all the help.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
No, good.
Okay, I need a motion to approve a contract for Agile Mind with a period from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, and the amount of $99,986 to be taken out of the FY '20 operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the ARI contract.
Yes, good evening, board members. Dr. Kane. I am seeking approval tonight for the replacement of the Queen Anne's County High School walk-in cooler freezer. As some of you may know, that was installed in 1966, and it is 53 years old, and it has met its life expectancy and then some. We have three bids listed there with ARI coming in at $72,310. We have done work with them before, reputable company, do good work, and they were the lowest company to place that bid in. So I was seeking approval for that tonight.
Who, these other two contractors, have we done work with them too at other facilities?
Yes.
But they're all...
And if you look at it, they're all in the same ballpark. I mean, the bids were very, very tight.
And what about service?
Service, yes.
Adequate for getting service if something goes wrong?
I was kind of surprised at how tight they were.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing, that.
I mean, you don't see that that often. You see a pretty large extreme.
The ARI services in this area?
Yes, sir.
Is they your satisfaction?
Yes, sir.
How many did we need to replace? I know we talked about, how many of these are...
Well, Graysonville Elementary School never had one, so we put Graysonville in there. We, Queen Anne's is our largest walk-in, obviously, with the size of that school. And if that were to go down, I mean, you're talking tens of 20, 30, 40,000 dollars of food in there. Bayside Elementary School would be the next one in line to be replaced, just on the age of it. Usually what goes first is the compressors, and that's normally what fails. This one, like I said, 53 years old. You're not getting a whole lot of R-value out of the walls and all that in there. I mean, it's not efficient at all to run. So we will be replacing some in the future, but most of them are in pretty good shape, so.
Well, all the schools on the island, except for Bayside, are pretty, pretty new.
Yes, Mata Peak Elementary School, Mata Peak Middle School.
Ken Island High School, I mean, it's only 20, not even 20 years.
So we're, we've been pleased with them. So Canard Elementary will be one coming up.
Coming up too.
They don't have really a true, they have a partial walk-in, but it's not really a true walk-in. So that'll be coming up. We'd kind of like to space them out, you know, one physical year, next physical year, so it's not taking on so much money at one time. Any other questions?
Thank you. So a motion, I need a motion to approve the contract with ARI to provide Queen Anne's County High School with a new walk-in, combination cooler freezer box, cooler condensing unit, freezer condensing unit, along with the power wiring and control wiring, and the amount of $72,310 to be paid out of the FY '20 capital.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item I have is for the approval of a contract with Aegis Flooring. Each year, we lightly sand down our hardwood floors in the gyms, dance studios, and then we reseal them and coat them for the proper traction. And as you can imagine, the wear and tear that occurs on them with all the athletic events and dance studio activity. We're seeking approval for Aegis Flooring for $57,355. We, again, have been very happy with Weir's Flooring. They're a reputable company that does University of Maryland, the Wizards Courts, so they've been around for a while. We also have installed rubber floors at Mata Peak Middle School, Stevens, I'm sorry, Mata Peak Middle School, Ken Island Elementary School, and Sellersville Middle School. And those need to be cleaned till you get to proper traction. That's a smaller fraction of the cost of this. Most of the cost is resealing the floors every year to get that traction. And I will say this, the prices over the past several years have gone up because you have to use the green that are not emitting all the negative, you know, chemicals. So the price of this has gone up the past several years. About three years ago, it jumped dramatically, but it's leveled off right now.
So one page here says that it's only 30 days after April 15th, so we're still, it's still gonna...
It's still, yep, we'll honor it.
This we do every year?
Yes, sir.
Looking into a multi-year contract doesn't save us anything, or...
We, it just depends on the product. I mean, if the product, you know, is, you know, on the market, what it's going for, you know, I could see if we could...
I mean, I guess, yeah, if you have some kind of environmental change.
Yeah, that really jumped up when we went to the water-based seal, or so.
Just curiosity, what are the rubber gym floors for? Why are those particular schools?
It just is a new feature that they have. When they built the schools, it was before I was here in this position, but different option. They seem to hold up very well.
Like, what are those rooms used for? Like, I know Stevensville Middle has an auxiliary gym.
So at Sellersville Middle School, that floor in a gym is rubber. It's not hardwood floor. It's a rubber poured-in-place floor.
Okay.
And like I said, the two or three other schools have it, and it's actually worked out pretty well. The only thing we found the first year was it truly needs to be refurbished every summer just to make sure that you're getting all the dirt and the minerals and all up out of it. Salt, when we have weekend activities, is a real bummer on it, so. Any other questions?
They led to a lot of slipping, right?
Yes. The first year they had them, they weren't cleaned properly.
Yeah, the kids were all...
We also have the ride-on machines at the schools that we also clean them ourselves, but to get that proper traction, and you get the warranty with it and the inspection of it, you know, it saves us in the long run insurance-wise.
Do you mind having more questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve the contract with EGIS Floor Life LLC to provide coating for the hardwood gym floors and restorative care for the rubber gym floors, and the amount of $57,355 to be paid out of the FY '20 '20 operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pender?
Okay. Ms. Pullen?
Ms. Pullen.
Good evening once again, members of the board and Dr. Kane. For the record, my name is Carla Pullen. I'm the facilities planner with Queen Anne's County Public Schools. This evening, I'm here to discuss with you contract approval for additional services to an existing project that we are working on at Ken Island High School. We're in the process of replacing the energy management system or the HVAC controls there. We were fortunate that the construction project came in slightly under budget, and as an additional service with GIP Associates, we would like to add building commissioning, commissioning for the HVAC system. Essentially, what this does is assures that all components of the project and the specifications are done and working as they were intended to. The controls, as you can imagine, are a very, very complex system, especially now that everything is computerized. So the commissioning process will be looking at all of the heating and cooling devices. They'll be looking at all the valves, which we have 144, potentially more, within that building. There are sensors, there are fans, there are dampers, controllers. Everything needs to work together, and it's somewhat of a snowball system. Each unit talks to the next to make sure that we're maintaining and regulating temperature within the building. GIP Associates is the current MEP engineer that's on the project, so this is an additional service to their existing contract, and we're using the pricing that was given to us from them from a pre-bid existing contract. It's a large investment. We think that since we are under budget, this is something that's definitely, definitely worthwhile to do, and it'll be helpful to our maintenance staff to help maintain the HVAC system for years to come.
So we don't have to have this bid it out because we're already working with it?
It's already in there, yes. And the investment for this is a million dollars at Ken Island High School for the project. And I'm, I'll say this, many, many years ago, a lot of these commissioning projects didn't occur. And we pay for that in the long run by getting buildings that aren't quite where they should be. And this one, when it is turned over to us, it will be true-tested in what it can handle and what it can do. It's a pretty complex system.
Is this like a change order?
Yes, it's essentially a change order. It is just adding to the scope of what GIP originally proposed. And again, this was on our radar at the beginning of the project, not knowing where the construction budget would come in. It wasn't something that we allotted in the beginning. Now that we know that we have the funds available, we're asking to do the additional service.
Did we do this service when we did Stevensville Middle School?
Yes.
Okay, and when we did Sellersville?
Sellersville, yes.
The buildings that were done after Ken Island?
Yes.
Knowing what had happened?
Yes.
And I have to show you, this is our Graysonville Elementary. This is for a sixth classroom addition, and this is our commissioning report. It's just very detailed, and it's something that we think is really important for a building the size of Ken Island High School.
We didn't have that in as an alternative for that project?
We could have. That's one way to handle it. The additional services is the other way.
We're also talking 20 years ago.
No, this was for, yeah, for the actual design contract for the EMS upgrades.
Okay.
Does this include any training or making sure our staff maintains this stuff, understands what's...
Yes, that's part of what's written into the manual. Our staff will also be on-site when they do specific things such as startup to make sure that there are very specific processes to how we start each of the pieces of equipment up again once all of this has been in place, and our staff will be involved in that training as well.
We also have, include the maintenance department in the progress meetings. So the foreman is always there, along with Carla. And then when we're looking at different systems, we actually include maintenance and their opinion because they're the ones that are working on it. They got to know what's going on. So it's a pretty good triangle they have going on with that.
So it brings a great perspective?
That's correct.
Definitely.
Okay, any more questions? All right, I need a motion to approve a contract with GIP Associates to provide building commissioning services for the HVAC control upgrades project that is currently underway at Ken Island High School, and the amount of $63,000 to come out of the FY '20 '18 capital budget, which was the budget allotted back then, which we are saving money on right now.
Yes, that's correct.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Pullen. Custodial supplies.
Last item that we have for my area is the approval of a contract with Decon, who provides our custodial equipment supplies, vendor management inventory they do for us. And we piggyback on Fairfax County Public Schools' contract, which is the 13th-largest school system in the nation, which gives us a little bit of extra, you know, buying power just based upon the volume that they deal with. We've been using, piggybacking on this contract for several years now and have had a lot of success with it, and we're seeking to have that renewal done again this year for $300,000.
Oh, it says estimated $300,000.
It says inexcessive.
But it shows on here, annual, last year it was like 315, 50, or 500?
It, yeah, it just depends. I mean, we have about $300,000 in there for that particular item.
Last year we used 315.
Yep, so sometimes I'm going to have to pull from another area, just depending on what's going on at that school. I mean, if we have like a flu epidemic or something like that, or if we're having, you know, different graduation events and all, the supplies that we need, you know, we're going to need a lot more supplies. So it's hard to budget that. But we have stayed right around in that figure there.
300, so?
Yes, sir.
And has that been a constant number for the last couple of years?
It's one item, yes, that in next year's budget, we're going to really have to take a look at and add a little bit extra to that, just based upon the prices.
Oh, yeah, inflation, we get it.
Going up and worse status quo, so.
And there's no way to do, instead of making an annual, there's no way to do a two- and three-year contract?
I can estimate that, that's...
I mean, it might be...
A lot of these contracts, if you notice, are out through '20, '21, '23.
I see the next one that's up is not until October of 2019.
It says custodial paper-related dispensers.
Yeah, there's, so basically, you're, there's different bids with Fairfax County, and some of them for paper supplies, other, you know, vendor management inventory, equipment. I will say this, in the past several years, Fairfax, when they put it back out to bid, Decon has come back in with that, the lowest bid every time that I'm aware of. So a lot of these will be a multi-year.
Do they deliver to each school, or do they deliver to a warehouse and...
Now, so years ago, we had five foremen, and products came from all over, different creations, and they would distribute them to the different schools. Now, with the vendor management, when you go into the custodial closets, there's a minimum amount, a maximum amount. They go in there with a computer, scan it, boom, next day, the products are delivered, put on the shelf. And we can actually keep better track of the products that are being used and are the...
So each school's ordered its own?
Yes, sir, and we keep track of that to make sure they're being used accordingly, or if something's disappearing with that. It's pretty detailed reports that we get with that.
So for, you know, you always hear these things, bring Kleenex to school. There should be enough Kleenex and everything basic needs there at most schools.
Toiletry items and all that, yes. I don't know about classes one during Kleenex, but, you know, when we're talking about toilet paper and paper towels and all that, yeah.
So currently, Mr. Pender, right now, we only have $300,000 allotted for this in the budget.
So this is lumped with all other custodial supplies? This is just the estimated that we spend on this particular contract with this particular company?
So instead of saying estimated, we just can say $300,000?
Well, as Mr. Pender allotted to, if for some reason we need to buy 50 extra cases of toilet paper because we had a run on that or something, so that's... Yeah, sorry, sorry for the pun on words. That's where the flexibility is needed in that particular contract. Certainly, it wouldn't be $400,000 or something like that, but that's why I gave you the estimate of last year was 315.
The hard cost was 315. That was the cost last year, 315.
Yes, yes, it was.
What do we have budgeted right now, $300,000?
This is just a piece of that line item.
Correct.
Like you said, the bottom line, if we have, if flu season hits us hard, it's going to be a little tougher.
So our custodial supply budget is $280,000, but this is not just supplies. This is also including some of our equipment that we buy from them that would be in our other areas, which...
Which could come from other parts of the budget.
Yes, but generally, yeah, this eats up almost the entire custodial supply budget because we buy just about everything from there.
Because I don't like saying the word estimated in a motion. You know, we'll be held to the fire over that. So if we say $300,000, and then we have to go back in and pull, do transfers, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
We should say up to $300,000.
Well, just budget 300.
Say $300,000.
In a category thing, you do it. If you don't, you don't.
I recommend just saying $300,000, and then, again, we can do transfers.
It says, it says inex... okay, yeah, you're right, just 300, and then we'll do a transfer.
And again, and just in the writing of that, was simply because last year was 315, 50?
No, I'm glad it's here. I mean, it gives us something to look, to consider down the road, where are we going to pull it from, but...
But also, as Mr. Pender mentioned, this is one of the areas that he typically pulls from other areas within custodial to fund this because his budget has not been increased in the last several years.
Correct.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the contract to Decon Products Company Incorporated to provide miscellaneous custodial supplies, custodial paper and related dispensers, vendor-managed inventory and custodial equipment. The amount is $300,000, and it will come out of the FY '20 '20 operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries.
Okay, great. Mr. Fister, last one?
Yes, thank you, Captain Kelly, Dr. Kane, board members. Yeah, last but not least, and I'll try to keep the jokes to a minimum. Before you is the contract, it's really a subscription service. We've had it for years, 2011. This is the finance, payroll and HR system. The, the cost of this is $82,131.36. It is a hosted system, so if we were to pull in a system here and actually host it here in-house, we'd have server issues that we'd have to, you know, purchase and constantly maintain. So we've been doing this since 2011. It, like I said, is our system. As Ms. Forbes mentioned earlier, this was a Sun Guard product. It is now a Power School product, so Power School is becoming a conglomerate and we will see benefits from our finance, payroll and HR systems being able, hopefully in the future as they combine these things, because this is still new, so that, to provide some data, cross-sharing that perhaps with our number of teachers, we can link up to number of students and things like that and have a cross-functional system with the SIS system.
So we didn't bid this out? We didn't bid this out?
We've, this is, this is one of those things where?
You don't have to.
Again, as we mentioned before, no, it was, it was bid out, I'm assuming, back in 2011 because back then it was a Lawson system. But when you go through an implementation like this, you're, you're talking huge costs to replace an existing system. And unless you're, the company goes out of business or you're extremely dissatisfied, that upfront costs would take years to recoup because most of these systems are priced accordingly. You know, you're not gonna find one for half this price that can do exactly what this system does. So even though we may have some benefits, your upfront implementation costs and the trainings and the transfers and all of that far outweigh any savings. But we're completely happy with this product.
What was, what was last year's contract?
It was about a 2% difference. Their escalator with Power School is anywhere from a 2% to a 3% escalator. We know that going in, especially on our multi-year contracts as we've talked this evening. That's about a typical escalator, anywhere from 2% to 5%.
Couple thousand dollars from last year.
Yeah, so, yeah. Couple hundred dollars.
Couple thousand.
And this is the system that meets the audit needs as far as server backup and the emergency preparedness?
Yes, we're, yes, we've, we've obtained, I can't, life of me can remember what the, the form is required, but our auditors do require that any of our systems that are hosted have this particular backup where they have off-site disaster recovery and things like that. This also includes all of our customer support, all of our, you know, training that we might need on an ongoing basis if we have a problem, you know, something we can't solve. That's all included here. But as far as their disaster recovery or if we need to do a backup or restore because we had a system failure, they have all those redundancies in their systems and we don't have to rely on them, on, on our systems to have them.
Do we have an increase in our, our enrollment last year? The only reason why I ask this is because it was brought to my attention by Mrs. Morsette under the supplemental terms and conditions, the enrollment, if enrollment increases, we get charged an extra 5% for the licenses. So is that where the 5% came from?
No, that's, well, this, this is a standard Power School licensed product and service agreement, so it probably migrated from the SIS because obviously if you have more students, there's the cost there. We're pretty much set because our costs are not driven by small changes in, in students. If we were to double, obviously the cost would go up. But our enrollment shifts on the student side are not really affecting us on the business side.
Okay, thank you.
So they wouldn't be connected then, right?
Yeah, I think the, the terminology is an API where they, where they have an interface that talks between the two. But this is within the last year that Power School has bought out Sun Guard. So it could be a year or two, but that's what we're hopeful for, that as we move these products forward, that they all talk to each other.
And I see it's an Oracle product?
Yeah, well, the, the underlying basis is an Oracle database, yes.
And all of our systems are Oracle-based?
I'd have to ask Mr. Combs about that, but I would imagine that or Microsoft SQL Server, I'm not really sure. I don't wanna get into the technology world.
That's the first time I've seen Oracle mentioned in any of our?
A lot of databases are Oracle. They're, Power School uses Oracle, so Oracle's the underlying.
Okay.
It sits on top of that.
Interesting.
As if you had a Microsoft Access program and you called it.
I got rid of Oracle, that's the reason why I'm asking, you know, that we're using it here. Okay. I'm good.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the FY 2020 subscription annual fee for Power School E Finance Plus in the amount of $82,131.36 coming out of the FY 2020 operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Mrs. Wright, a vote?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you to all of you on the contracts. Next one is the elementary social studies textbook series approval. Is there, you wanna talk about that, Dr. Kane?
Certainly, let me get back to it. I was looking for the term that Mr. Fister was, that was escaping him.
And we are looking at final approval of this?
That's correct.
And we have had that out on the street.
We've had it out for two rounds of viewing and we're requesting approval. We've not gotten any comments for this series.
How's the staff like it?
Well, they selected it.
So, but I mean, but it's?
It was their choice. So they reviewed certain, you know, several different options and, and this was the one that they selected. As you know, we put it out for public comment and viewing and we've gotten no, no response back, so we're ready to request approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
I don't.
All right. So I need a motion to approve the purchase of Pearson My World Interactive, which is a comprehensive digital and text-based resource for grades of K to 5. It's a social studies textbook series. Contract period is August 2019 to June 2020 in the amount of $232,302.96.
Coming from?
Oh, I'm sorry, coming, coming out of the capital tech, capital budget.
Capital textbook budget.
Where we have the textbooks.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries.
Okay.
Dr. Kane, I see it says like on taxes. We don't pay sales tax on this stuff, do we?
No.
No. No.
The state's not that rude.
No, we do not pay sales tax on anything. I don't even pay sales tax on employee reimbursement, so no, we don't pay sales tax.
We don't pay sales tax on anything we purchase.
No.
Okay, and I need a motion to approve the HR report as presented in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, again, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries.
The HR report is approved. Next item is the transportation report.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Kane again. Seeking approval tonight for Barbara Pritchett to purchase a used bus for the 2019-20 school year. This will be replacing, unfortunately, Mr. Earl Wilmer Senior passed away recently and I believe the family doesn't have any interest in continuing with the transportation. So that allows one contract to be open. Depending on the situation here, like I said, Ms. Pritchett would like to purchase a bus, a used bus, so the PVA, it is not going to be, you know, at the regular rate. It will be whatever year that bus is.
That'd be, I mean, it's not about business because she might be purchasing Mr. Wilmer's bus or?
I, I don't wanna get into that. I don't think so, yeah.
But you, you can buy used buses?
Yes, sir, you can buy a used bus. It has to be inspected and it has to meet the, you know, the Maryland Department of Motor Vehicles, all their guidelines.
And our PVA, if it's a eight-year-old bus that's only got four years left, it's rated?
Yeah, it's gonna be at that PVA. So say the bus is, uh, 2012. Whatever that year is, it's gonna come from 2012. It will not be?
The length of time it runs out.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The next bus is for Barbara Wallace to purchase a new bus. The four LLCs are allowed to have six spares and those spares do not get a PVA. It is $500 a month for having spare bus and basically with the amount of, with the buses being able to go to 15 years now, they are seeing buses break down. So basically having the spare bus enables another contractor to rent that bus from them. So seeking approval for Ms. Pritchett and for also Ms. Wallace.
So Ms. Wallace is buying a new bus with a new PVA?
That will be with a new PVA.
And so that means her current bus is?
Her current bus will not get a PVA. It will only get $500 a month.
It has 15 years, is that what, or it can't?
It can't, I mean, it can't be a spare and have 15 years. You're only allowed, we're looking for 12 to 15 years. 15 years?
What is hers at?
The state of Maryland. Hers is an '09, so it's 10. It'd be going 11 years.
Okay.
Which does qualify it for being a spare.
Okay.
So.
Spares also can go up to 15, right?
Yep, that's correct.
But 12 is the ideal?
It, as you remember, a few years ago, the state moved it up to, over to county, got the state to approve that up to 15.
Okay. Any questions on the transportation? Okay, a motion to approve Barbara Pritchett to purchase a used bus and Barbara Wallace a new bus and her old bus of number 10609 will be used as a spare.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next items are the policies for approval. These have been through the process?
They've been through the process, so they've gone through two reads or requesting approval for behavior threat assessment policy 508 and the high school grading policy 629. Regulations accompany both of those.
And any comments received?
There were no comments.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on these policies? So I need a motion to approve the behavior threat assessment policy number 508 with the associated regulation 508.1 and the high school grading policy number 629 with the associated regulation 629.1.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, again, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you to the policy committee too for putting all this work into it.
And the last approval item, action item, is the school board, Board of Ed's handbook. We put a lot of work into this and this is the vote for the approval of the amendments we've made to the BOE handbook. So I need a motion to approve the amendments to the Board of Education handbook.
Are we, pardon me for clarification?
We get four votes, it goes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
So do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the amendments to the school board handbook. All in favor, Mrs. Wright?
Board members, please respond when your name is called. Captain Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have four in the affirmative motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a 10-minute break, come back at 8 o'clock, then we can finish up. Welcome back. Next item on our agenda is the policies put out for second read. One is a complaint policy and other is student data governance and privacy. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Information items?
Transfer notice, I'm sorry, Mr. Pender.
Thank you, Captain Kelly. Before you is just the, the standard, as we had talked about the last couple of months, the standard transfer notice, which is in category transfers, does not require your approval, does not require county council approval. And for the month of June, as we're closing out the year, we made a $6,000 change from the object of temporary wages to custodial supplies to finish out the supplies in the uniform budgets with anticipated expenditures.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that transfer notice? I do have one question on the, how are we on the closeout? I mean, how did that?
So, so we're wrapping up now and we'll have some information for you later in the year, but we always use June as the cleanup, because a lot of invoices and everything come at the end. We try to clean up all the purchase orders and everything like that.